All right, it is six o'clock. We will call this meeting to order. Nathan, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember McPherson.
McPherson.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Laraway.
Yes.
Council President Bruce.
Here.
Mayor Steer.
Here. And if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item is the consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
Councilman Laraway? Did you have anything on the... I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Laraway.
Yes.
Council President Bruce.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next, we have public comment. I didn't have anybody sign in wishing to address the council. Is there anybody who wishes to? All right, so none. That takes us right to public hearing. Item 6A, the FY 2026 budget hearing, appropriation ordinance 2025-25. This is an ordinance entitled "The Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2025 and Ending September 30, 2026", providing for findings, providing for the adoption of a budget, and appropriation for the expenditure of sums of money to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Kuna in accordance with the object and purposes in the and in the certain amounts herein specified for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending on September 30, 2026, authorizing a levy of sufficient tax upon the taxable property of the city of Kuna and providing for an effective date and the filing of certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho Secretary of State and the Ada County Clerk and the Idaho State Tax Commission. Jared M.P.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight is the culmination of at least six months of work that entails meeting with directors to determine needs for city operations, performing detailed calculations for each fund, and collaborating with elected officials. Presented is the version that the council approved unanimously at the July 15 meeting. This budget sufficiently funds all city functions for the fiscal 2026 year, which ends September 30, 2026. What you see before you is a good faith effort to estimate future revenues and expenses more than a year in advance. And while not perfect, the budget funds vital functions of police, parks maintenance, clean drinking water, wastewater treatment, and irrigation services to nearly 35,000 residents and more than 11,800 utility customers. None of these functions is possible without the passage of a budget tonight. The first principle used to estimate fiscal year 2026 revenues and expenses is the concept of fiscal conservatism, in which building permit and utility revenue are estimated with ample leeway in the event that the building climate changes in the valley. Indeed, the proper application of fiscal conservatism prevents the city from overcommitting and overpromising, leading to a future reduction in key services such as law enforcement by passing a balanced budget. The second principle used in the 2026 budget is that of interperiod equity. Though not widely discussed, this is a principle that expenses incurred in the current period are paid for using revenue generated in the current period. One example of this is the sufficient levy of property taxes to pay for the current need for law enforcement. Another important example is that of collecting enough revenue in the current period to fund maintenance, operations, and depreciation of the current period in our utilities. Although not all of these expenses entail the use of cash, all of these expenses entail the exhaustion of assets or the creation of liabilities. It must be covered by revenue of the current period to not burden future years. The proper application of interperiod equity ensures that the usage of bonds will be eliminated or greatly reduced and that any individual fund will never run out of money to operate. Lastly, the final principle used in compiling the budget is that of looking ahead to the future through long-term planning and saving for eventual asset replacement. This is especially evident in the five enterprise funds of the city, namely the Water, Sewer, Irrigation, Water East, and Sewer East Funds. Moreover, due to city budgeting principles in effect in Idaho since the early 1990s and as permitted in Idaho Section 50-1,005A, the city has the right and obligation to set aside monies for future operations and obligations. Long-term planning is essential, as growth is not expected to slow down anytime soon and maintaining the same quality of service is tantamount to the city's responsibilities to its residents. Although we have discussed many elements of the budget at length, I will stand for any questions the public may have concerning the budget that was previously passed on July 15.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Jared at this point?
The comparison with the defraying the 1%, I was just trying to see if there was a breakout of that.
Let's see, so are you, Councilman Biggs, are you referring to how changing the police or changing the property tax levy would change kind of what that percentage would look like?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I believe on page 227 of the packet, it figures in on that page. If Nate could scroll to page 227. So on page 227, I updated that page to reflect that. So for fiscal 2026, we'd be at 98% of police budget to property tax budget comparison. And the reason for that was that we were planning to reserve the 1% for future years and our police budget decreased due to changes in COLA rates that the county was authorizing.
If I may.
Yes.
What I think you're asking is what was the difference in what we were collecting as opposed to what we are now? Is that kind of what?
So to answer that, as part of the resolution that's further along in the agenda, the amount that we would forego comes to 48,200.
Anything further?
Not at this time.
All right. All right, this is a public hearing. I did have a couple of people sign up to testify. Is there anybody that wishes to testify but didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay. Michael Rocco, you may have the floor, sir.
Michael Rocco, 1286 East 40 East Street in Kuna, Idaho, 83634. Good evening, mayor. This is council members and treasurer. Thank you for the opportunity to share my observations on the proposed FY 2026 budget. I want to begin by recognizing the hard work of the staff and treasurer in preparing a balance plan that responds to our city's rapid growth while maintaining essential services. Some positive observations I have is our city remains in strong financial position with healthy reserves and the ability to fund major capital needs without debt. Public safety funding continues to grow, ensuring we protect our residents as Kuna expands. Significant investments are planned for water, sewer, and park infrastructure, the very systems that support our new families and businesses. And I appreciate that the budget uses conservative estimates for building permits and impact fees rather than overpromising revenues. Now, some concerns that I have is, one, is the reliance on carryover. Much of this budget relies on carryover cash from prior years. While that is common under Idaho law, we need a clear policy on how much should be held in reserve versus spent. That kind of guideline would give both the council and residents more confidence in long-term sustainability. Infrastructure planning, large projects like the Mason Creek sewer upgrades and the new council chambers are necessary. But right now, capital improvements are described as being, quote, "compiled as needed." I believe Kuna deserves a formal five-to-10-year infrastructure plan that lays out timelines, costs, and priorities. That way, the public can see where their money is going before construction begins. Employee costs, I support the 2.41 COLA for staff, but health insurance costs are volatile. We should explore whether joining point risk groups could stabilize costs, reduce uncertainty, and protect employees as well as taxpayers. Regarding transparency, currently, the council sees monthly reports and an annual audit, but most residents don't see those details. I recommend that we institute quarterly budget, public budget updates, so the community can track spending against the plan. Regarding accountability, earlier this year, Mr. Mayor, you committed to allowing council members to meet directly with department heads at the start of a budget process. Right now, department heads meet with the treasurer and their requests are rolled up before the council has input. For next year, I want to respectfully hold us to that commitment. Direct dialogue with department heads will give council and the public a clearer view of needs before decisions are finalized. In addition, I urge to make the start of budget planning more visible to the public. Too often, residents only hear... Mr. Mayor, can I respect to have 60 more seconds? May I have 60?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Too often, residents only hear about the budget after it is already drafted. Let's use multiple channels, city website, newsletters, public workshops, to invite residents to weigh in early. Budget is not just a staff exercise. It is a community conversation. So in summary, the FY 2026 budget is strong, it's forward-looking, but we can do better by setting clear reserve policies, planning infrastructure more formally, managing employee costs proactively, and opening the process to council and the public more prominently. These steps will strengthen accountability and assure Kuna's budget reflects both fiscal responsibility and the voices of our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rocco?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. David Spleck?
Well, it's Greens that's already on. My name is Dave Spleck. I live at 970 Ashwood Court. And as you might suspect, I have a different view from Mr. Rocco. This, I do a lot of work for governments, and this is the oddest city. For example, last year, I complained that you did this budget hearing as a as a normal agenda item, the consent agenda, but this year it's a public meeting. And I was told to shut up last time. Well, not those words. So, I mean, one of these approaches is correct and one isn't. Wait till you're charged. Plus, I worry that I see you guys spending money sub-optimally. That's a nice way to put it. I think you're, I don't think you realize that you're either hurting us or not helping us. For example, you spent all that money widening sidewalks on downtown Main Street, but Poor Jackson's store was losing $2,000 of revenue a day. And it took, I watched ITD rebuild 15 miles of Highway 45 in 15 days. And it took four months to do three blocks downtown, and Poor Jackson's losing all that sales. Jackson's essentially paid for your sidewalk, roughly. Then they, because you spent all that money, or we spent all that money, on downtown, the poor grandmas and kids are walking in the mud on Ojai Street. I don't know why the city can't fix Ojai Street like we did, like Kuna did, on Elm Artisan and Franklin. I mean, you guys spend the money on basic mobility and safety first. I mean, this enhancement stuff, I can teach you, well, as a consultant, I can teach you a better way to spend the money or a prioritization thing. The third thing was that downtown money got spent on the goofy traffic signal at K. Now, I know that you guys had a... The consultants who did your work gave you three options for designing it, and you guys, or the city, pick the one with the highest exit rate, and they can forecast an increase in fatalities. And when I asked for that warrant analysis, the staff told me it didn't exist, which it did. So I, I gotta warn you guys. But my position, I'm just alerting you that every engineering consultant and most of my lawyer buddies know about that.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'm sorry you used up all three minutes. I could have done another 30 minutes. I won't. Thank you. Thank you. And just for clarification, every year, the budget is a public hearing. That's never changed. And the downtown money that was spent was community development block grant funding, not citizen taxpayer dollars. So just to clarify those two points, anyway.
Darn, I had a question. Back when he was on the council, how much sidewalks and any infrastructure did he update? So I guess we don't know.
Okay. Anybody else wish to testify?
It's a hard act to follow.
All right, thank you very much. Well, council, I appreciate all your thoughts in this. We can do different things next year, and we certainly will. We've always tried to do what was requested, so we will make those changes for next year.
I move we, yeah, do you have anything else? I move we close evidence presentation and move to deliberation.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I guess I can start. I do appreciate everything that you do, Jared. Thank you. I know it's a lot to go over and the culmination of everything. I think just for me, even though we did calculate the 1%, I was wanting to spend, save the taxpayer more than $40,000, right? That was, my goal was not to take the 3% property tax increase. I think we were at 112 million. Last year, we spent 106. So we still had some rollover. And then to move from 112 to 150, just in my mind personally, is just a lot to grow. So those are just my concerns. I think with the mayor saying next year, we can actually have a discussion with whoever's here, depending on the outcome of the election, can have a discussion with the directors. They can come to us and say, hey, here's what we have, and then we can pick that apart of what they need. I do like the idea of having a better plan further out of what we're going to be spending money on. And I do like the idea of updating folks quarterly or maybe biannually about what we're spending and what we're doing. That's a great idea. So those are just my comments. I just would rather have not taken the property tax increase. I know that there's been time where even Ada County, the commission has given back tax dollars that they had in excess. So I just think, you know, depending on what we're going to roll over and what we're going to keep in our accounts, not necessarily taking the 3% every year. But I know we are handcuffed with 389 and what that puts on the cities. But for me, it's just, it's too big of a budget for me to sign off on. But I do appreciate all the work everyone's done.
Good, and I can appreciate that. And we do have capital plans for capital projects, so that will be easy to put together as to what we're looking forward to in the future. So that's not going to be a problem.
I think that way, if we knew, hey, we've got, you know, $40 million that we're going to spend this time, then maybe it's not so much to start collecting in that and saying, hey, we're not going out for a bond. We're collecting this money. So that's, but those were my thoughts.
Sure, and a lot of those things are, you know, the 10-mile lift station, that's got to get redone. That's going to cost us several million dollars. Those are things that we have in the future that we'll take care of. So in that plan, you'll see where that is and where that money needs to go and why we have it. I will say that we are very fortunate to be one of the very few cities that aren't either asking taxpayers for a levy override or laying off police officers and that type of thing. There's several that are in that. Garden City is laying off one or two police officers. Meridian's asking for a levy rate increase. We've been able to facilitate taking care of ourselves with what we have. So so far, I think we've done good with that. There might come a time when that is necessary, but at this point, we're in pretty good shape. So I am very pleased about that and proud about that fact.
I think we've grown, you know, rapidly with our population, and we've done very well growing the city and not trying to bond or levy or, you know, do the things we've had to do. I think every now and then, we have to take a leapfrog jump in a budget to accomplish things we need to get done infrastructurally and otherwise. And I don't recall that we've ever had this big of a jump at one time. But, you know, Jared has been fabulous with the numbers and grew city accounts where they needed to for, you know, those emergency things that pop up, you know, a $500,000 blower for the treatment plan or whatever the case may be. He's prepared us well for that, because when he started, we weren't well-prepared for the uh-oh expenditures. I mean, we could have been, we were hanging out in the wind, just waiting to dry, and luckily, that didn't happen. We recouped everything and maintained everything. But I think, I think where we're at now, taking this one time, bigger leap, it's going to sit the city even better than what we are now. I know it's a lot. It is a lot to swallow, but it's...
Well, I think we went from 112, which was probably, Councilman Biggs, do you remember what we looked at before? I think it was 80-something we went from.
Oh, back in 2019?
And so we've grown it a considerable amount. So and I'm, and I think, like I said, at our last meeting, we just maybe have different views on how much should we actually keep. I think that's just a philosophical difference of what government body should actually keep, so.
The one thing that, when I look at the increases, everything is pretty proportionate over the last several years, with the exception of the sewer fund, which was explained, I think, pretty well. The Mason Creek improvements, because that was the one that jumped almost doubled over FY 25. And that is a large chunk of why we're jumping from 112 to 154. I do share the same sentiment, which is why we brought up the pullback of the 1% last time in the meeting. I thought it might be more than $48,000 as well. I guess I didn't have my math ready to go. But, and that's where I also thought perhaps maybe we should look at recouping some of the reserve, you know, whether it's a million dollars or $5 million or something like that. But...
Well, and to touch a little on that Trump line, you know, it costs some money to put it in and...
Well, that's also where the, yeah, the general fund is also increasing quite a bit, which I imagine supports that.
Right, but then in the long run, we're not paying how much a month in all these pump fees, and we recoup that fairly quickly and...
Throw a lot of lift stations in.
Yeah, a lot less maintenance and not having to worry about lift stations going down in the middle of the night and yada, yada, yada. It's a more fail-proof system. Let nature do its thing.
One other thing I look at is, this is going to sound kind of odd, but sometimes we create our own problem. And what I mean by that is, let's check hypothetically the Dale site up south that we had just thrown on. If that would have turned into a residential, we would have been on the hook for $5 million to build another pond out there. That would have cost us, so our decisions that we make, not knowingly, could either cost us money or save us money. So the budget has to be, I'm going to call it dynamic. It's got to be able to move to cover our decisions or choices. So I have, yeah, it is expensive, but so are our decisions that we make.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't disagree with that. I think for, you know, we budgeted 112 last year. To go from 112 to 150, that's a big number.
Remember talking about how this guy chose the sewage fund? That was five, that'd be $5 million.
Yeah, we're growing at, you know, 30-something million dollars, and we're collecting property tax of roughly $5 million. So think about how many years of property tax we're raising our budget there.
I like the idea of the directors putting their portion in one meeting, and then another director in another meeting, because sometimes it's hard to swallow all the information that's coming in. And we can have an intelligent conversation about why do you need a pump truck? Or can't we rent one? I mean, there's a lot of discussion we can have. So I like the idea of future budget meetings, even if we start at 5:30 or 5 o'clock on certain nights, to bring more people in and have the director give us their vision of where they're going with this.
Yeah, it'd be easier to digest. It'd be easier to digest that information individually, so.
And then we also have that enterprise funds can't be used for other things. So we can't take one piece of the budget, pad something else. And so those things also have to be taken into consideration.
No, I guess one thing I forgot to ask last time was about the grant fund. Does that disappear soon? It's been whittled down?
Um, yeah, I don't know if we've got any grants that are hanging out right now.
Yeah, so Jared M.P., City Treasurer, so the grant fund, basically, all we have going in that for now is the opioid funds that we receive regularly. We also have just a placeholder in the event that federal funding becomes available. As the mayor said, that's kind of gone away with the changing of the garden in Washington. They've kind of gone away from the grant model. So like I say, it's kind of just a placeholder for the most part.
And a lot of this was also a result of COVID, right? I mean, there were a lot of grants during COVID.
Yeah, there was, so.
That jumped a lot of people's budgets. Yeah, grow, you know, if you get back to pre-COVID spending, that would cut a lot out of a budget, but...
Well, it's like the downtown project that was all grant funding, so that would have been showing up in there.
Well, and I just look at, you know, the state and how they're cutting their 3% and other agencies are cutting, going back and cutting their spending. I'd just like to see as a, as a municipality, maybe do something similar as well. But I do appreciate all that they do. It's a lot of work. So I'm not trying to downplay what they do. I think it just comes to just philosophical differences of how much we think, how much I believe our government should have to spend as opposed to someone else. So I don't have anything else to... So I move we waive the three readings of ordinance 2025-21.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion?
Mayor, one sec. Just want to make note that it's 2025-25.
Oh, yeah. Ordinance 2025-25.
Okay, so it's...
Uh, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-25.
Motion's made and seconded for approval of the ordinance. Is there any discussion on that motion? For approval of the ordinance, is there any discussion on that motion? Nathan, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Laraway?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
No.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Yeah, summary publication.
A move we, consideration to approve the summary publication of ordinance 2025-25.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approving a summary publication of the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, that brings us to seven. A consideration to approve resolution 51-2025, forgone property tax levy reservation. Jared, in.
Thank you, mayor and council. So this resolution is directly tied to the budget that was previously passed, which is to reserve the amount for forgone property tax for future use. The amount, if I can get it, it's 48,200, which reflects a 1% forgone amount that can be used in future years. And I stand for any questions.
And all that is, is to reserve it so that if we decide to take an extra, you can...
A future.
You don't.
A move we approve, approve a resolution R. 51-2025.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, that takes us to ordinances. Consideration to approve ordinance 2025-21, a municipal annexation and zoning ordinance of the city council, the city of Cuna, making certain findings and declaration of authority and annexing certain real property to wit Ada County Assessor's parcel number S. 1312233600, owned by Toll Southwest LLC, within the unincorporated area of Ada County, Idaho, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Cuna, into the city of Cuna, Idaho, and establishing the zoning classifications of said real property and directing the city engineer and the city clerk and providing an effective date.
A move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-21.
Second.
Motion's made in second to waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance 2025-2021, uh, 2025-21.
Second.
Motion's made in second to approve the ordinance. Nathan, would you poll the council?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Laraway?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Consideration to approve ordinance 2025-22, municipal annexation and zoning ordinance of the city council, the city of Cuna, making certain findings and declaration of authority and annexing certain real property to wit Ada County Assessor's parcel number S. 1315449280, owned by Techo One LLC, within unincorporated area of Ada County, Idaho, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Cuna, into the city of Cuna, Idaho, and establishing the zoning classifications of said real property and directing the city engineer and the city clerk and providing an effective date. And that's it.
A move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-22.
Second.
Motion's made in second to waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance 2025-22.
Second.
Uh, motion's made in second to approve the ordinance. Nathan, would you poll the council?
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Laraway?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Uh, consideration to approve ordinance 2025-23, municipal annexation and zoning ordinance of the city council, the city of Cuna, making certain findings and declaration of authority and annexing certain real property to wit Ada County Assessor's parcel number R. 5070502020, owned by Misty and Noel Hudden, within the unincorporated area of Ada County, Idaho, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Cuna, into the city of Cuna, Idaho, and establishing the zoning classifications of said real property and directing the city engineer and city clerk and providing an effective date.
This is it, huh? Mr. Adam?
Last report, he was even happy.
Should we waive it three readings? Should we give it three readings? A move we waive three readings of 2025-23.
Second.
Motion's made in second to waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance 2025-23.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Nathan, would you poll the council?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Laraway?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. And a big shout out to Adam and his crew for actually finally bringing that to an end.
Yeah, that was, uh...
Good work on that.
I know. I've been talking to him for, what, three years about dealing with it, so...
Yeah, it's been going a while.
Yeah.
All right. Consideration to approve ordinance 2025-24, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Cuna, making certain findings and enlarging the boundaries of the Cuna Municipal Irrigation System by the inclusion of Ada County Assessor's Black Creek LP and declaring water rights pertinent there to are pooled for delivery purposes and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance as provided by law. Directing the city engineer to provide notice of this ordinance to the Boise-Cuna Irrigation District, the owners, and update the irrigation system map and providing an effective date.
A move we waive three readings of ordinance 2025-24.
Second.
Motion's made in second to waive the three readings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance 2025-24.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval. Nathan, would you poll the council?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Laraway?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Uh, that is all we have on the agenda for tonight, so mayor and council announcements. Does anybody have anything they would like to mention?
Bobby's Block Party Friday night here at 5:00.
Okay.
Here.
Out behind city halls.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We won't all fit in here, sure.
Yeah.
I'm positive.
And then the, the fair, Ada County Fair, is up and running this week, so...
The Western Idaho Fair.
Yep. So if you get over in Garden City, there you go. I don't know that they give you a reason to go over there, but I'll go and check it out. It's good.
Chief used to like to go all the time.
No.
Okay. Maybe that was...
I'm done with the fair.
Just straight out of the door. Like, that's it? No.
19 years of fair.
And...
The, the ice cream potatoes, though, are still...
That's good. Well, we also went to the, the Ojai County Fair, and there was a lot of 4-HD, did the, the auction, which was pretty amazing. I didn't realize cattle could get up to, you know, $9,000, $10,000 for one of those things. They were, folks were bending them up like crazy. It was, it's pretty, pretty good sight to see, so. The kids do a great job with that. That's all I have.
Yeah, Nancy?
I would like to give a shout out to some of our local businesses and community partners. So, Ribbly's has donated all the water for Bobby's Block Party. Idaho Pizza has donated 50 family-sized pizzas for Friday night. Cuna Lubango gave the family a very generous check to support party. And United Site Services, and thank you so much, Morgan, they're providing all the quarterpotties, delivery fee, everything, at no charge to the family. The city has not paid a dime towards, towards this event, but the community has really stepped up, and I think that speaks volumes to Bobby's involvement and everything that he touched while working here and just being a community member. So it's great businesses that we're fortunate to work with, so I think it's awesome.
Yeah, very good.
Very good.
All right. Well, that's all I have for the evening, so with that, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you very much.